So next, we're going to head into the budget items on our agenda. And the way that we're going to do this is the clerk is going to read orders 233 through 239. So those are all of the school budget orders, which tonight are first read. So we'll get through the reading of those. I'll invite Councilor Mavidonis to speak to the issue. And then we're going to have a presentation from the Chair of the Board of Public Education. After that, we will take public comment, as has been shared and announced widely. Hope people got the, we got the word out. I'll remind folks now, and I'll remind folks as we head into that process, that we're asking, because we added an additional public hearing, that you speak either tonight or next Monday at our meeting on the 10th, but not both. So if you choose to speak tonight, we welcome you and thank you. And if you choose to stay to hold your comment until next week, that's okay, too. So with that summary, I'll ask the clerk to please read those orders.
Order 233, accepting state local EPS funding allocation for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for the Portland Public Schools for fiscal year 2022. Order 234, approving non-state funded school construction debt services for Portland Schools for fiscal year 2022. Order 235, raising and appropriating additional local funds for Portland Schools for fiscal year 2022. Order 236, approving total school operating budget for Portland Schools for fiscal years 2022. Order 237, appropriating and raising funds for adult education for fiscal year 2022 as required by the main revised statutes titled 20A MRS 8603A1. Order 238, to raise and appropriate local funds for food services in the Portland Public Schools for fiscal year 2022. Order 239, authorizing the disposition of any additional state subsidies received for Portland Schools for fiscal year 2022, all sponsored by the Finance Committee Council Nicholas M. Mavidonis, Junior Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And so I'll look to you, Councilor Mavidonis, for any comment that you'd like to provide.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief. As I'm sure you all know, because most, many of my colleagues, probably all at one time or another, joined us during our budget discussions this year, both on the school side and as we've started the municipal budget. The Finance Committee had two joint meetings in the last several weeks with the School Board and the administration to talk about the budget. Just so people know, the School Board and its budget and the City Council budget are on somewhat different schedules this year. They're a little different because the municipal budget is actually a little later than it usually is. So we take them up separately. The City Council sets a total amount to be raised by taxes. There are a number of orders, as you hear. Those are set by state statutes. Sometimes they're referred to as the different buckets of money. But we, as a council, don't have any control over any of the details of the School Board's budget, programming, staffing, any of those items. We only set a total amount. So following our meetings, a presentation of the budget by the superintendent, and comments by School Board members, and a public hearing at our meeting on the 29th, the Finance Committee voted to recommend a tax levy of $99,114,406, which is an increase in the tax levy from last year of $4,775,662, or a 5.1% increase in that tax levy. The recommendation is just under 1.5 million less than what the School Board has proposed. And as I think many people know, because there are many people here this evening, this is the first of two public hearings that the council is having on this and will be voting on the 10th on a total amount. So I will leave it at that and defer to the School Board Chair and, if necessary, Superintendent to their presentations.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So I'm going to look to Jessica to bring the Chair, bring Chair Figdor over so that we can, we can hear the presentation. And we may need to do some screen sharing, I'm not sure about that. But welcome, Chair Figdor, and we were eager to hear your presentation. Thanks for being with us this evening.
Hello. Thank you so much, Mayor Snyder and members of the Portland City Council. On behalf of the Portland Board of Public Education, I am proud to present to you tonight our recommended fiscal year 2022 budget for the Portland Public Schools. The Board approved the budget on April 13th. This budget's theme is advancing equity, and it really turns a corner on the critical work that we first set out to do as a district in 2017, when the Board adopted the Portland Promise. As the strategic plan for Maine's largest and most diverse school district, the Portland Promise is centered on our equity goal, a vision for improving opportunities and outcomes for students who have been at the margins for far too long: students of color, English language learners, students with disabilities, and those who are economically disadvantaged. It commits us as a district to repaying the longstanding educational debt owed to students who have been on the margins for generations. And since we are only as strong as our students who struggle the most, this budget makes good on our promise to all Portland students and families. Equity is at the center of this budget and our focus as a district because while outcomes for our middle-class white students are generally quite good and comparable to those of students from affluent suburban districts, we do not have the same outcomes for students of color, students whose first language is not English, students with disabilities, and those living in poverty. The huge achievement and opportunity gaps in our city are unacceptable. And we know we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. That's where the fiscal year 2022 budget comes in. The Board's fiscal year 2022 budget of $125.2 million is up 4.4%, or $5.3 million, over this year's budget of $119.9 million. It requires an increased investment of $6.2 million from local taxpayers and would result in adding 64 cents to the school portion of the tax rate, a 5.5% increase. About $2.4 million of the increase in our budget is a baseline budget that maintains current programs and services and covers increased costs for salaries, benefits, and debt service. New investments totaling $2.9 million make up the remainder. And the specifics of these investments are outlined in my cover letter accompanying the Board's approved budget book. Yes, this budget asks us, residents of our great city, for an investment, but it is an absolutely critical investment to adjust the deep inequities in our school district. Portland is a city that says it values its rich diversity, but the murder of George Floyd and the protest for racial justice last summer turned a spotlight on the stark inequities throughout the nation, including right here in our own city. Nearly a year later, there are signs supporting Black Lives Matter all across our city, and our businesses routinely put out press releases embracing racial equity. Young people and many others across our city continue to push for a racial reckoning in city government, our police department, and, yes, in our schools. This school budget meets that moment. It presents a compelling vision for what our city aspires to be. It continues our efforts to lay a foundation for creating the type of schools that are reflective of our ethos and consistent with our values as a school system and city. The budget before you today was referred to you by the Council's Finance Committee with a recommendation to reduce it by approximately $1.5 million. Over three meetings with the Finance Committee, we answered every question posed by the committee and those counselors who attended the meetings. We heard unanimous support for the intent and specifics of the budget. And yet, we stand here today with a recommendation to reduce the budget. The basis for that recommendation is the desire not to increase taxes this year. While last year we passed a budget with no tax increase as the pandemic and the economic disruption that came with it were unfolding, the fact of the matter is that we cannot meet our students' needs with 0% tax increases. Let me explain. First, while the city has access to a variety of revenue sources, our budget is by and large limited to state aid and local property taxes. In fact, 95% of our budget comes from these two sources: state aid and local property taxes. While the city is smart to use its federal funds to plug areas where revenue is lagging but will come back, that is just simply not an option for the district's budget. Second, our state funding is declining. We know that with Portland's rapidly increasing valuation, the state will continue to reduce funding for our district. This year, we received about $1 million less in state aid than in the previous year. We would have lost substantially more if Governor Mills had not increased state spending on education and reduced the mill rate. Our downward trend in state funding will continue into the future, placing increasing demand on our sole other major funding source: local property taxes. We will continue to work very hard with the city and our state delegation to increase the share of state revenues coming back to Portland. But until that happens, it is unrealistic to create an expectation that the cost of running schools will not be passed on to local taxpayers. Third, as a result of the long-delayed renovation of our most rundown elementary schools, we have additional debt service this year and for the next four years until the pension obligation bonds roll off of our budget. Voters were given the option and overwhelmingly decided to increase their property taxes to rebuild our aging school buildings. Voters already made that choice and that commitment. While I am sympathetic to the desire to use COVID relief, federal COVID relief funds to close our budget gap, it frankly would be irresponsible. Last year, in order to realize a fiscal year 2021 budget with no tax increase, $1.3 million in federal funding was used to pay the salaries and benefits of 20 of our custodians. The district plans to continue to use federal money to fund those positions over the next two budget years. In other words, we already have $1.3 million in expenses that will, in time, need to return to the general fund budget. Adding the $1.5 million proposed by the Finance Committee will result in close to $3 million that would need to shift back to the local budget. That would cause about a 3% increase in the tax rate at the time that federal funding expires. And that 3% increase in the tax rate would be on top of increases resulting from year-to-year cost increases, continued decreases in state aid, and increased debt service. In addition to the shift of custodians, the district has already shifted numerous one-time expenditures to federal funding in an effort to reduce our baseline budget. Curriculum and professional development expenses, summer school, technology, and facilities, costs and improvements are among the expenditures, totaling almost $7 million that we're covering with COVID-related federal funding. We heard counselors express concern during the Finance Committee deliberations that the increase in our budget comes at a time that the city is engaged in the first revaluation in 15 years. What was not said, however, in the conversation about revaluation is that revaluation is, by design, an equity move. Revaluation will increase the tax base, which is expected to reduce the property tax rate by about 30%. Generally speaking, that means about 1/3 of property owners will see an increase, and 2/3 will see no increase or a decrease. Let's talk about the 1/3 who will see an increase. An editorial by The New York Times entitled "How Lower-Income Americans Get Cheated on Property Taxes" examines the inequities that result from not regularly reevaluating properties. The editorial board pronounced, and I quote, "Local governments are failing at the basic task of accurately assessing property values, and there is a clear and striking pattern: more expensive properties are undervalued, while less expensive properties are overvalued. The result is that wealthy homeowners get a big tax break, while less affluent homeowners are paying a higher price for the same public services." Yes, the 1/3 of property taxes, yes, the 1/3 of property owners who experience an increase are the ones who have benefited for years from incorrectly valued properties. They paid less than their fair share, while the other 2/3 subsidize them. That's why revaluation is, by design, an equity move. There will be individuals affected by the revaluation who are on fixed incomes or facing life circumstances as a result of the pandemic, or health, or other factors, who will be unable to meet the increased tax demands. Like all of you, I believe we should be compassionate and responsive to people in need. Fortunately, the city has tools at its disposal to help people who truly can't afford the increases. I urge the council to consider dedicating a portion of the city's federal funding to help out in those cases. Or you could use the city's Poverty Property Tax Abatement Program. This would be, by design, an equity move for you as a council. The district is fortunate to have additional American Relief Plan funds totaling $18 million that we are able to use to face the increased challenges of rebuilding students' academic and social-emotional foundations in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are committed to using those funds to advance our equity work as a school district. Those funds, whether it be through our proposed participatory budgeting process or because it addresses known needs, such as the need to increase the number of social workers beyond what is currently in the budget, as noted by Counselor Chong, will be used exclusively to support our commitment to creating a more just and equitable school system. I pledge that the Board will work with the community and the council to make sure that those resources help us realize the Portland Promise. Throughout the budget process, I have been inspired and buoyed by the strong consensus around the rightness of what we have proposed in this budget. In the Board's process and in our joint meetings, the voices that we have heard are nearly unanimous in support of this budget. I ask you to meet us and to meet the moment with us. Support this budget as passed by the School Board, and let's get to work creating the Portland that we all aspire to. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Chair Figdor. We appreciate your being here this evening. We will have time for council questions and debate and discussion next week. So I'm looking to my fellow counselors and saying I will be going directly to public comment from here. So I want to, we've got 96 people with us this evening. We are eager to hear from you. Thank you for being with us. We will stick to our usual process. So I'll call on you. Please make sure that you've unmuted on your side. I'll give you three minutes on the clock. I will keep my microphone on and sound on so that you can hear my timer when it goes off, at least I hope you can. If you don't, if you don't hear it, or if you keep talking, I'll just remind you to wrap it up. And again, thank you for, thank you for being with us this evening. We look forward to hearing what you have to share. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. It's always helpful for us to get a sense of how many folks we've got in the queue. Sometimes we near the end, we think, and then a bunch of hands go up. So I think it's just best to get them up. So thank you for that. And the first person I'll go to is Tatariko Creative.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can.
My name is Jen Boggs. I live at Edgeworth Avenue, and I have a daughter at Longfellow Elementary. I really wish this was in person so I could see that I was going to be the first person in line, because I may not have raised my hand so hastily. But I just wanted to say that I 100% support the budget as presented by Chair Figdor. I think, I think I really resonated, it really resonated to me what she said about the commitment that I've heard from the council and the commitment that I've seen with the Black Lives Matter, AAPI matters, you know, signs everywhere. I think this is how we do the work. I keep hearing people talking about doing the work of equity and inclusion, and this is it. I also want to say that I, you know, it is the right thing to do. It is the just thing to do, but I also think it's the smart thing to do. I keep hearing, I feel like I'll never stop hearing stories about how we need people to work, and we need people to fill all the jobs in this wonderful city of ours. And I feel like, I feel like it's not just people in the margins, and children and families in the margins that we're talking about here. I think we're talking about building future citizens who can become employees in this city and who can become employers in this city. I believe in these kids, regardless of the equity that is lacking now. So let's invest in them so that we can have them continue to grow this city in the future. I really do think that there will be a dividend paid. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you for being, oh, can you, yep, thank you for being with us. I'm going to stop the clock and restart it for Amanda.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. My name is Amanda Atkinson-Lewis. I live on Bancroft Street in Portland. I am a Portland resident. My daughter goes to Lincoln Middle School, and I am a social worker with the Portland Public Schools Department. I'm speaking to strongly urge you to vote to approve the proposed budget for the 2021 school year. As you know, this budget centers equity and would allow the district to make big steps towards calibrating the effects of the opportunity gap and other systems of systemic racism that, excuse me, other symptoms of systemic racism that leak into our school institutions. Our country, state, and city have been steeped in policies and laws that maintain systemic racism and white supremacy, and our school system is not immune to being reached by those powerful forces. It takes moves that codify systemic change, like this budget, to help set our community on a more ethical course. As a community member, I expect that elected officials use their power and positional authority to take the work of addressing systemic racism and increasing equity from theoretical conversations to action steps that create systemic change, such as this proposed budget. One of the many things that we've learned during COVID is that big systemic changes, i.e. how things are done, are not only crucial but doable when it stands to benefit the health and well-being of the greater good. This budget is a crucial and doable change that will benefit the health and well-being of all of our students, families, and community. Equity work benefits everyone. As the parent of a Portland Public Schools student, as a Portland community member, and a member of the Portland Public Schools staff, I hope that elected officials use their power and positional authority to make decisions that will positively affect the health and well-being of all Portland Public Schools students. Lastly, I would like to speak about my colleagues. It is no mystery that more and more expectations are being put on schools and school staff to help meet the needs of our community. I do not know one single school staff who is not working extremely hard with unquestioned commitment to meet the needs of our students and families, often to the point of extreme fatigue and overwhelm, and always well beyond the contracted work hours. We need this budget approved to help us meet our shared primary goal of ensuring that all students get access to the opportunities and supports that they need to succeed. Thank you very much.
Wow, that was perfect timing. Amanda, I didn't catch your last name. Can you let me, oh, you're off the screen. Okay, that was my fault. I have had a request just to let folks know how many hands we've got up. So we've got 17 up right now. If you would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand so that we, that we can see you. Oh, hi, Amanda.
Did you need my name?
I said I didn't catch your last name, if you don't mind repeating it.
Sure, it's Atkinson-Lewis.
Thank you. I just keep track of who speaks. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so 17 hands up, and next we'll go to Marfin Chan.
Mayor Snyder and counselors, my name is Marfin Chan. I'm a resident of 25 Rackliff Street, and I'm here to urge you to pass and put this budget with no cuts onto the June 8th ballot. Disparities and inequities have long existed in our schools here in Portland, Maine, and across the country, even before the pandemic. The pandemic has exacerbated those disparities and has shined a light on the need to start addressing these issues. We've seen how people of color disproportionately occupy frontline service jobs. We've also seen how families of color experience disproportionate loss of family incomes as their downtowns and businesses closed or reduce their hours and staff. In addition, Black, Latino, and Asian families are also more likely to experience food insecurity. In the midst of this, families of color were also shouldered with the burden of having to turn their homes into virtual classrooms. And we've seen the barriers to accessing high-speed and consistent broadband and the necessary devices like laptops and mobile hotspots. This is an issue that me and my fellow members of the Maine State Advisory Committee to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights has explored over the past year, and will be publishing a report on that soon. But I say all of this because all of this disruption and instability has had a deep impact on the social, emotional, cognitive, and academic outcomes of students of color all over the country and here in Portland, Maine. These are the problems we are facing today in the here and now. In fact, they are the problems we've been dealing with for decades. $2.9 million, a $2.9 million investment in equity will not solve all of these problems, but it's the first step. It gets the ball rolling. To remedy the past and to break down barriers and help level the playing field, it's not going to be free. It's going to cost money. It's going to hurt a little, just like when you spend thousands of dollars to fix a leak in the roof or go in and get a tire change or realignment. We're all used to spending money to prevent a problem from becoming a bigger problem that will cost more money down the road. It's something called adulting. And one final note, this week happens to be Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you to all of our teachers. And I urge Mayor Snyder and the counselors again to put this budget as passed by the School Board with no cuts on the ballot on June 8th, and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we'll go to Elizabeth Capone-Newton.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Good evening, Elizabeth Capone-Newton, Oakland, Rhode Island. I urge the whole council to support the school budget as it was passed by a majority of the School Board. I ask that you send the school budget back to your Finance Committee for their reconsideration as a committee. The people of this city, excuse me. The people of this city understand that we care for ourselves as one people, children, youth, adults, seniors, together and interdependent. Our survival and well-being requires that you, our local representatives, consider our needs together, whether they're public safety, public health, education, or others. You need not cut short the conversation about the needs of our 6,000 students just because the city budget process is slightly delayed this year. As a council, your responsibility is funding the full city budget, not shortchanging schools on a technicality of timing. What you do to our children, you do to the whole city, parents, grandparents, neighbors. If you invest, we all benefit. If you neglect, we all suffer. My partner and I rent our home, and we have two children in Portland Public Schools. Both of my children are Latinas of indigenous and European descent, and one has special needs. Like many PPS students, they have a parent who is an immigrant and has survived racism, migration, civil war, and colonization to make a life in the U.S. My partner is one of very few employees of color and immigrant employees in Portland Public Schools. He works with children with special needs. Our family is part of the large working poor in Portland. We are one of thousands of families waiting to hear if our application for rent relief will be approved. We receive a food stamps, we have main care, and despite working hard every day in and out of our home, we lead lives of service to our community and its children, including our own children. A portion of our rent probably pays $6,000 a year in property taxes and $12,000 a year of someone else's mortgage. Are we less valuable to you because you do not get the check directly from us for those taxes? Are we less valuable to you because our landlord is building wealth from our income, but not us? No, that would be ridiculous. Every person in this city is valuable. You have the chance now, this May, even without a charter revision, to do right by all of us. Young and old, poor and middle-class, housed, houseless, working, unemployed... Young and old, poor and middle-class, housed, houseless, working, unemployed, disabled. We are Portland. Shortchanging children does not pay. It's immoral ethically and it's unwise fiscally. I am part of a majority of residents in Portland who are tired of homeowners or taxpayers and renters who are indirect taxpayers and people without homes who are former and future taxpayers being spoken of by some council members as if our needs are at odds with one another.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I would just ask for a time since I had a problem.
Go ahead and just wrap up. Thank you.
Yeah, I will wrap up since it's only one comment. Young and all together, we are at least 50,000 people strong. And we know that Portland need not choose between minimally functional schools, elderly people on a fixed income being able to take their medicine even when their tax bill is due, and life-saving services for all, including houseless residents. We anticipate and reject the narrative that there is not enough for all of us. We see there is plenty to go around with large businesses having gained the most from federal COVID aid. But we see that the few hoard precious resources while the many suffer. Some suffer in homes they own, some suffer in homes they rent, and some suffer in cars and tents and on the street. But our suffering is of one source. It's the lack of fair sharing of resources. And you, as a council, have the power to remedy that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I did reset the clock with another 30 seconds, just so folks know, but want to try to stay consistent. So next we will go to Kimberly. Kimberly, if you wouldn't mind giving us your name and address or the organization that you represent, that would be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Simmons, 71 Quebec Street in Portland. And I am speaking tonight based on my work with the Portland Public Schools Anti-Harassment Project and the policy that came out of it. But first I do want to say, and I am here in support of the budget, I want to say that I also reject the narrative that people don't want to pay more taxes and don't expect tax increases. I am a sociologist and I did a little research. And the Pew Research Center shows that actually a third of people don't feel like their tax burden is fair and two-thirds feel either it is fair or they're not paying enough. So I'll send you links. But I think we have an opportunity to talk to people about what the worth of taxes is. So tonight I just want to say a few things about the importance of following the legal mandate of Title IX, and I am not a lawyer. But we did a lot of work on the anti-harassment policy in Portland in part because we knew that Portland was not in compliance with Title IX law and was very vulnerable to a lawsuit and continues to be. And so we dug in a coalition of advocates, researchers, and students as well as school board members and school staff to try to figure out what would need to happen to bring us into compliance and understanding that Portland is now on notice as having a problem with sexual harassment and racial harassment because students have given testimony, both anonymously, online, and through the report that was published, as well as in more private reporting. So once Portland knows that it has a problem, it has to invest in prevention work in order to follow the guidelines of Title IX, which was a part of the Education Act of 1972. So if we were just to take an economic perspective, lawsuits are very expensive. The average lawsuit, the average jury verdict in the country has been $7,274,000 with verdicts as high as $60 million. I mean, yeah, $60 million. And we also know that survivors bear a huge cost to experiencing sexual violence. One study found that adults who were assaulted during adolescence have an estimated lifetime income loss of $241,000. So it's not economically, it's not, there is a cost and the question is who's going to pay it? And so I ask you to have that burden shared among all of us and to invest in the prevention work that will keep us from having high legal fees later.
Okay, thank you very much. And just because I was asked to do this, I'll just let folks know that we've got 14 people with their hands up. If you would like to raise your hand, go ahead and do that. We next go to Miki Bondo.
Mayor, I just got noticed that they're using an older version, so it can't allow it this way. I could promote to panelist and then she could talk if you'd like me to do that.
Sure, why don't I hop over to Elizabeth McCormack and then we'll take Miki after that. So Elizabeth, you're up.
Hi there, Elizabeth McCormack, 11 Smith Street, Portland. I went to urge the council to support the school budget as presented. I am wholeheartedly in support of it. I have worked at Riverton Elementary School, now the Talbot School, and I'm a graduate student in the Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program at USM. Amanda and previous residents have spoken so eloquently already that I'm not sure I have much more to add. We cannot claim to be a city that supports racial equity and reduce the budget from what was proposed. You cannot have it both ways. Now's the time to move from performative activism towards real, actionable change to dismantle the tools of systemic oppression. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you too. And I will go to, Miki, we've got you with us. Happy to hear from you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Miki Bondo, 26 Federal Street at Portland. And I'm also a school board member, District 1. And I'm speaking in favor of a full amount of FY 2022. The reason is that 20 to 30 years ago, our teachers were not prepared to face the diversity of languages spoken in their classrooms. And today, Portland Public School has more than 60 languages spoken and 50% of the student body are BIPOC students, which have brought challenges to provide a valuable and good quality of education and to those students to try. And those facts are, we can see the higher achievement gap than we are well-known for years. And the achievement gap has been worsened by the pandemic. We have since today 251 duly identified students between the language support and the special education. The law plan is a must, is a must who has been overdue for years. But it takes the boldness of a leader to recognize the systemic inequity and build some innovative strategy for change and bring the equity to the center for the change for all our students to be able to try and to be able to achieve some academic level. Because those are the next generation. Those are our future. Those are students who represent the growth of our economy for the years to come. Because each aspect of FY 22 to invest, to advance the equity, is overdue. And we need to have a solid, long-lasting foundation and funding. When are we going as a community to make sure then we can make visible the invisible for our great city of Portland? The time is now, it's not in two years. We improve the value of our public education for all our students and all our educators. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you too. Next we'll go to Suzanne.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Snyder and councilors. I'm Sue Chevalier. I'm the Director of Pre-K Programs for Portland Public Schools. Tonight I'm urging the city council to fully fund the fiscal year 22 Portland Public Schools budget. Specifically, I'd like to draw attention to the critical importance of transportation for pre-K students, for families who would otherwise not be able to engage in high-quality Portland Public Schools pre-K experiences. This is truly an equity initiative. In 2018, the Data Innovation Project of USM generated a report entitled "Pre-Kindergarten in Portland: Community Perspectives and Recommendations." This report identified common challenges in accessing pre-K services, all of which we at Portland Public Schools are committed to addressing as part of our commitment to the Portland Promise. Common challenges highlighted in this report include hours of programming, transportation, and locations of programs. The report also shared data on other districts that offer transportation for public pre-K. These include Bangor and Lewiston. This year's budget includes transportation and expansion of pre-K slots to better address the ongoing interest and need in our programming. In addition, the Urban Institute in 2014 released a report entitled "Supporting Immigrant Family Access to Pre-Kindergarten." Pre-K transportation was one of many access barriers highlighted in this report. Given our Portland Public Schools population and the families who have indicated an interest in pre-K and a need for transportation, the importance of providing transportation certainly applies to us. Finally, based on this year's lottery applicants and the many families that have indicated a need for transportation, could we make it available? I urge you to fully fund the budget. We fully expect that there are other families who did not even apply for pre-K slots because we have not funded transportation in the past for pre-kindergarten students. Please consider removing this barrier to accessing high-quality pre-K by fully funding the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. And next we'll go to Katrin Monahan.
Hi, Katrin Monahan, Parkside. I'm also a teacher here in Portland. I'm a special educator in our therapeutic program for students in Portland, speaking tonight to express my support for the budget. I support the budget because it affirms that Black Lives Matter. It affirms that Black disabled lives matter. It affirms that Indigenous lives and Indigenous sovereignty matters. And it affirms that the lives of Asian-American students matter. And it affirms that educators of color matter and so, so much more. This is not an empty platitude, but a vigorous, human-focused systems change that will drastically change outcomes for our community. This budget does not only do this by adding social workers to support social and emotional well-being, something we crucially need now during a pandemic, but also by adding a career coordinator for Black and Indigenous educators of color, compensation for identity-based work, additional funding for the Wabanaki and Afrikaners Studies Departments that we're now building, and an expansion of the Special Education Continuum for students with autism. I've had the pleasure to serve on the Wabanaki Committee this year. And I can tell you that I'm absolutely honored. It's hard to find the words to be able to support that work. And it's all been done under leaders here in the Donland, and I'm really moved by it. And I cannot wait to share it with our community and our state because it is the first public schools pre-K to 12 Wabanaki Studies curriculum that this state has seen. That work continues with this budget. I also want to remind us of the declaration earlier in this meeting to extend the state of emergency. We are indeed in a state of emergency, not just due to the pandemic, but due to the ongoing public executions of Black people happening every single day in this country and abroad. I want to remind us of the shared space as well that we held this summer in June, where we all, everyone on this screen, we all shared the same steps, including me, including you, and our superintendent. And we made a commitment to break down the systems that contribute to the systemic racism in Portland and beyond. This budget is that work. This budget is the follow-through. This budget is the intersectional affirmation that Black, Brown, Indigenous, Disabled People matter in Portland. And I think it sends a very dangerous message to our most underrepresented students and staff to suggest that we don't put this into stone with systemic, steady-funded support, but use the leftovers from a pandemic fund, one that will dry up and widen the gap only to leave us to fight again in a few years. It sends a dangerous message to discuss trolleys and outdoor dining, but when presented with systemic affirmation of Black life, to be told it's too expensive. This work is not the leftovers. This work is the city.
Thank you, Katrin.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we will go to Vanessa.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Vanessa Sylvester. I live on 159 Central Ave on Peeks Island. And I would urge the council to vote for the budget in full. And I just need to echo all of the great testimony before me. And there's just a few points that I want to raise. I am a resident. I've been here for over 20 years as a taxpayer, as a parent, as a union advocate, and currently I am employed by the school district as an educator. And I am 100% on board to making an investment in this budget. I think it is well worth the tax increase. And again, for the key issues, and I also want to tell you that I have three kids and two have graduated from Portland High and one is currently in Portland High, and we've had an excellent experience. But we do need to do better. And the many great things about this new budget can really get us to this level. And I think that for me, the importance of the EL program, we have got to do better with diversity in staff. And any support and expansion of pre-K is so important. And I really believe that if we are truly going to be a Portland for working families, for New Mainers, for union families, for young people that want to stay here in Portland, I think we need to be able to provide a school system that represents our values as the city of Portland, that represents justice in the schools, that represents opportunity, and that represents our commitment and investment. Like somebody said, it's not cheap, and it is not. Our commitment to give our students space for excellence. So again, I do believe the time is now. Please vote for the budget in full. Thank you very much.
Thank you too. And next we'll go to Aura.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Aura Russell Better. I live at 8 Arcadia Street. And I'm a proud school board member from District 4. I want to urge the council to support the full budget as was overwhelmingly passed by our school board. And just wanted to share a little bit of my observations in this past year of COVID, which has really demonstrated both our resilience as a community but also laid bare our serious lack of safety nets. And I think it's become glaringly clear that schools are safety nets for so many of our families. PPS has fed children throughout the pandemic, whether in school, in person, or not. Our staff have shown incredible flexibility and creativity for meeting students' basic needs to clothing, cupboards, mental health services, and much more. And speaking to school leaders from Presum Scott, the school that my family has attended for many years, and my observations, I've seen the opportunity gap widen this past year as many white, middle-class families have been able to support students at home with remote learning, provide enrichment opportunities outside of school, and private childcare. While conversely, many BIPOC families have struggled to put food on the table, have been exposed to COVID at their workplaces, and have largely been in survival mode. And I really think it's time for us to help families to get out of this survival mode and back to being able to focus on getting their education needs met. A couple of the specific pieces I've seen that stick out to me is the inequity in access to books, which are huge for early readers, ELL students who may not have exposure to English in the home and especially through text. While many white, English-speaking families have access to books and other reading have access to books and other resources at home in this past year of limited time in school. As others have mentioned, an unequal access to wireless and technology. It took much of the year for Portland schools to be able to get students the equitable resources they needed to do remote learning. So in thinking of all of these things, I ask, as others have mentioned, to rethink this narrative that seems to come up every year, that pits our low-income homeowners and renters kind of against the value of funding our schools. I would urge you to consider the 6,700 Portland Public School students as your constituents, the vast majority of whom cannot vote and don't have a concrete voice. But I would urge you to consider yourselves as a board. I know that I speak for those students and work for those students, but I would argue that all of us as elected officials in this city are responsible for giving every opportunity possible to all PPS youth, particularly those who we have failed to invest in. So just to finish, I'll say if we have concerns about low-income seniors, that is real, and we have to problem-solve about that. I think the cuts that the Finance Committee approved would really save less than $4 per month from the numbers I've seen for many homeowners. So I surely think that we can assist anyone who needs help, whether it's through the Parpety Tax Abatement Relief Program or other creative ways, instead of scrapping half of PPS's equity investments. I know I care about seniors and our students, and I think Portland's a city that wants to and can lift up all of those who are vulnerable in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we go to Yusuf.
Yusuf? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. My name's Yusuf Yusuf. I live 132 Marginal Way. I'm also a board member at large. As we all know, we have COVID-19 has been severe on students. New data from CDC shows that children's mental health-related emergency department visit has increased 24% for ages 5 to 11, and 31% for ages 12 to 17 compared to 2019. I work with students who show more medical need. I work with some of them develop comfortability to stay and to isolate themselves and stay in their rooms for the past year. Through my work, I have learned that COVID has disproportionately affected a student with disabilities and a student of color. A student with disabilities struggle online in school. They miss it one-on-one time with teachers and social workers and who help them manage their behavior. As you have seen the presentation, students of color are more likely to be chronically absent than the rest of the students. They are academically at risk of becoming disengaged and eventually dropping out. They need urgent support. Most of the students I work with happen to be students of color. They face the most harm because of their community lacks the resources to make up for the lost learning in school. I helped parents in the beginning of the pandemic to apply unemployment, and they went back to work when the restriction is released. That's not the case for our students. Although there is a COVID-related federal funding, students are not workers who need unemployment until they get back to their feet. Students need long-term, sustainable set of targeted education intervention to lift up all students, specifically disadvantaged children, and reduce inequality. And that's why I think this year's budget is uniquely different than any other budget. I don't think there is more needed time than now that we can help our students. Equity is the center of this budget because obviously, students of color are way falling behind than the rest of the students. These kids are friends, buddies, neighbors. They sit next to each other through the year. They are planning to graduate together. They want to give back to our community and our city at the same level. Today, they don't have voices. You are their voices. You are their leaders. And this is the moment that they need you the most. Thank you so much. I also want to appreciate your commitment, and thank you. And I would like you to support the budget as it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Beverly Stevens.
Thanks. I live in the Stradwater area. I'm the proud mom of a graduating senior this year, so excited about that. But tonight, I'm speaking to you as the representative of the Portland Administration Association, so the principal of Ocean Avenue School. And just wanted to say that our PAA, or the Portland Admin Association, is committed to the overall equity journey that this budget reflects. So thank you for listening and creating up this listening session, and for everyone on the call. Just wanted to name a few things that I know that come into my life and the kids' life at my school. The continuing connection to the pre-K promise that Suzanne already talked about, the increased slots and the transportation, giving kids a head start and jump into kindergarten is huge, and all the money that it saves ongoing, the less support that those kids need because they come into school ready to go. The social studies curriculum that extends, that it provides to students for them to understand the experiences, histories, and accomplishments of people across the world, and not just Eurocentric. So what's going to be happening next year and the year after, to extend our social studies curriculum is going to be amazing for our kids at the only international baccalaureate school in town. And then the critical work of diversifying our staff. At Ocean Avenue School, we had zero BIPOC educators, and now we have many, many more. Again, it doesn't reflect our whole, our staff does not reflect what our students are, but we have more. And the impact that this has had on our kids has been tremendous, that they're able to use the language skills in math class. We've had many more kids be able to meet the standards in math because now they're understanding right away, as soon as they enter school, they're able to say, oh, I know what you're talking about now. And so that has been, not only are they looking at the staff and saying, oh, you look like me. I know I can succeed, but also immediately being able to understand what's going on. So that has been this. And so we need more of that, please. And then summer school. So I know that is also in the budget, the equity piece. But we at our school were able to, not a lot of kids, many kids, were able to stay on track, make the growth that they were able to make. But out of the 350 kids, we have 117 kids that we're inviting to summer school because they're not on target. They're not meeting their standards at their grade levels. So we still have a large chunk of kids that we need to invite back. We do need that to have many more kids than usual. And I know the people on the City Council believe in this. It's not like you're against equity. You're for it. You had a plan to say, the Finance Committee saying, why don't you use that money that is at the, the funding is providing for you, the federal funding. But using that cost, that's a one-time cost, is really hard because then to adding it back into the budget later is really difficult. It creates this cliff. Thanks. That makes it harder to get back in later. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, I will go to Marcus Houston.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Mayor Snyder, and members of the City Council. My name is Marcus Houston. I live at 1021 Ocean Ave. And I'm speaking tonight in support of the school budget as proposed by the school board without any cuts. I believe a budget is a direct reflection of values. And this is a bold statement by the school board from an equity standpoint. We, as a city, talk a lot about diversity, equity, inclusion, and now is the time for us to act on that. We can't wait, and our students can't wait. Portland has the opportunity to be a leader in Maine, and we should be leading by example, especially when it comes to our schools. Year after year, we hear stories of racism and hate speech occurring in our schools. And this budget will give us the opportunity to move forward from that. In my professional work, I work with Portland parents on a regular basis, and their biggest concerns regarding the schools that their children attend will be addressed by this budget. And for the past few years, we've been talking a lot about systemic change, and now is our opportunity to do just that, invest in the system that is supposed to ensure the well-being of all children. And this budget will move us forward, ensuring that we are creating a school environment where all students can feel safe, welcome, and wanted. If we are able to do that, we will see higher levels of success from our students. I trust that the school board has the best interest of our students in mind, and it seems as though they have laid out the best plan possible to help our schools rebound from the impacts of this pandemic and to address inequities. And again, a budget is a direct reflection of values, and I hope that you will pass the budget as proposed by the school board and allow the people of Portland to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we'll go to Sally.
Hello. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear from all of us. I'm speaking tonight as a homeowner in Portland and a commercial property owner, and also the parent of a long-fellowed student in fourth grade. I want to echo much of what's already been said very eloquently by the people who have already spoken tonight and encourage the council to approve the budget as presented by the school board. I'll just add that I don't think we can state that we support equity work and then refuse to support it financially. Those two things don't equal each other. I will keep it to that because we're actually in the middle of dinner. But I do appreciate your time and and this opportunity to weigh in before you vote next week. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sally. Have a good dinner. Next is Gloria.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Snyder and councilors. I'm a parent and a taxpayer in Portland. Have lived in Portland about 20 years and have seen this budget process many times. I hope it, I've seen it improve, and I hope it continues to improve. I'd like to ask you to support this budget in full. Advancing equity is something that will benefit all of us, all Portlanders, and is essential for Portland to thrive and produce students that are ready to create work opportunities as entrepreneurs and to join the workforce. And I would really hope that funding investments in equity would be a primary concern for you and priority. We have systems in this city and in this country which are grossly inequitable. And for a school system to create tangible actions to counter systemic inequity requires support from you all. The budget before you includes strategies to effectively address these systemic inequities. The commitment, intense work, and intelligence shown throughout this pandemic and am before by school staff to truly meet the needs of students is really, really awe-inspiring. This budget is thoughtful and smart and should be funded in full. And the federal funds will not offset the increases to the budget as what is needed are systemic and long-term investments, which are in the budget before you. I urge you to support the budget developed by the Portland Public Schools. No cuts. This budget is a great investment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gloria. Next, we go to Lise.
Hello. Do you hear me?
We do.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm speaking with you as a parent, immigrant parent. And I would like to support the school budget. It will be approved without cuts. It will help all students. Students with special needs support the social, emotional well-being of our students and their student-economically disadvantaged. That's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us. Next, we'll go to Joey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good, thank you. My name is Joey Brunel. I'm at 61 Calhoun Street. First, I just want to say really quickly, I want to extend my congratulations to the Chair, to Councilor Ray, my district councillor on her new position, and thank her for her many years of service. Now for my comments. I am, of course, urging you to support the school budget as presented by the school board without cuts, but I'd like to provide a slightly different argument than the ones you've been hearing. Councilors, if you think the tax levy is too high, if you're concerned with the impact on taxpayers, fine, this budget will be put to a citywide vote on June 8th. Let those taxpayers decide if it's too big for them. What better way to determine what the people of Portland think than to ask them at the ballot box? Or do you think you know better than the voters? Do you think you're qualified to second-guess the school board before the voters of Portland can weigh in on their budget with a vote? Or do you not believe in the democratic process that we have to approve the school budget every year? A lot of folks have realized or are realizing that this process for passing the school budget every year is broken because the City Council has the ability to arbitrarily make cuts and exert a level of capricious control over the school's budget that no entity gets to exert over their own city budget. In June, we're also voting for charter commissioners, and I would encourage everyone watching and listening to vote for candidates who realize that this budget process is broken and who are committed, actually committed, to fixing it. Me, I'm supporting Shay Stewart-Bullew in District 1, Zach Bearowitz in District 3, Marcus Houston in District 4, and at law-
Excuse me. We do try to keep the comment germane to the issue at hand.
Mayor, these candidates are supporting reform of the budget process that we are currently in, and I would argue that it is germane to the topic at hand.
Well, just, I think that it's a separate issue, and I just don't want anybody to confuse matters and think of this as a, you know, that we're talking about candidates for the charter commission. That's a competitive process, and the hearing tonight is focused on the school's budget. So thank you for sticking to the subject on which we're doing our hearing.
That's fair. You're the boss, and I encourage you all to approve the budget as it has been presented with no cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Jim Hall.
Hi, Jim Hall, Cedar Street. Listening tonight, I just kind of felt the need to let you know there are actually people out here who fall on the other side of this question, although we may not be all speaking up as publicly. And, you know, I have to give the usual caveat, substantive work on equity and inclusion is important, but now is not the time to add a whole new spending category with no thought to balancing overall spending priorities. We're all still recovering from a COVID economy. And unfortunately, the school board failed to do any prioritization, and they left ranking of details to you. Now, I guess if you wanted to dig in and figure out each 5% reduction per department to make a novel addition possible, that would be fine. I mean, I would point to the manager's proposed city budget as a better example of responsible budgeting. You know, in order to maintain critical programs, the merely important areas had to be trimmed. And, you know, nobody's looking forward to an extra hour to wait for snowplows, but that was the way to balance it. And I would say the same thing, for instance, of the county tax, where they've asked for 20% increase. But I guess, to your recent point, who should be paying whom for regional services? That's a different conversation. But, you know, you as a council voted on goals that include reducing burden on residents as well as human dignity. And because of the failure of the school board to produce any prioritization in this budget, you only get to choose one of those goals right now, which is an unfortunate position for you. But I'm making the decidedly unpopular recommendation of being adults in a different way by not raising taxes at the worst possible time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And next, we'll go to Lauren.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Hickey. I live in the West End. I'm speaking as an interested resident of Portland, a young person who has recently moved here. And I wanted to speak in support of the school budget as approved by the school board without any reductions. Much of my points have already been stated, but I particularly like to highlight an aspect of the school budget that might not traditionally be considered an equity issue, but I believe that it is. And that is the outdoor learning coordinator. I believe that this is an equity issue because it supports multiple types of learning and diverse students who learn in different ways. And supporting our food studies curriculum as supported by cultivating community and food- as supported by Cultivating Community and Food Corps. In addition, I think that there are various equity issues in this budget that I support, including supporting multilingual staff and multilingual families, promoting social-emotional learning resources, as well as funding and paying a director of DEI. And as iterated before by other commentators, I think that all of these things required a sustainable source of funding, and CARES Act funding is not a sustainable source of funding. So I believe that in order to put our money where our mouths is in terms of equity, we need to include this in our budget and put this out to referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, too. And next, we will go to Kate Sykes.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you very much, Mayor Snyder and the councilors for taking up this issue. Kate Sykes calling in from Deering Center, Alba Street. Wanted to just voice my support for keeping the budget whole. Really trust the school board in this. They're the folks that are the closest to the needs on the ground, and I think they're the most qualified to make the decision. I personally am a 51-year-old white homeowner who has no kids in the school district at all. And my husband and I would be more than glad to contribute more in taxes for something that is so important. So just wanted to bring that voice here. And also just want to say that I was really disappointed in the communication that came out of City Hall on this issue. You know, we really do have a problem in our country, really in our nation, at this time around this notion of small government and taxes. And it's just this old refrain that keeps coming up, surprisingly, typically keeps coming up in Republican circles. And so it's just really shocking to me to see two quotes from city councillors saying, number one, from the councillor in my district, Mark Dian, District 5, that we need to solve problems we're facing today, the problem we're facing today, which is the ability of taxpayers to absorb additional costs. I'm sorry, but I just don't think that that is the problem that we're facing today. We have so many problems, and I would put issues of equity at the very top of that. Similar comments from Nick Mavadonis. I just don't think that that rhetoric is helpful. It's divisive. It pits homeowners and taxpayers against non-homeowners, renters, immigrants, folks that have kids in the schools. It's just, that's not helpful. And I know, Mayor Snyder, you are the communication line for the city, and I know that that's your area of control. And I would just urge you to look a little bit more carefully at those emails that are coming out for the really clearly partisan rhetoric that's coming out of City Hall, and it's just not helpful to having respectful discussions with our neighbors about these things. So anyway, keep the budget whole. Really appreciate your being here tonight to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you. As much as I am a fan of our communications department and work with them, I do not oversee the communications department, just to be clear. Thank you for the feedback. And next, we go to Emily Pines.
Hello. My name is Emily Pines. I live on Revere Street in Portland. I'm a resident, a parent, a taxpayer, and I work as a school-based therapist. So I've seen the challenges that desperately need to be remedied, which is why I absolutely support this budget and urge the council to support it. I believe that community members see the value in the budget and contrasted with the very small tax increase, which would be shouldered by residents like myself. I've heard something along the lines of $12 a month based on a median $250,000 home. I'm the parent of two high school students at Deering High School, and I truly believe that the budget will make our local education better and more equitable for the entire community. Asking you to think about the bigger picture, about what kind of a community vis-à-vis the school system that you have the power to support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. Next, we go to Claire.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors, for having this discussion tonight. A lot of the points that I wanted to make have been said earlier, so I just want to echo everybody that is expressing full support for the budget as it is. I spend as much time as I can listening to the various meetings that the school district engages in, whether it's a policy meeting, the school board meetings, the curriculum meetings. And also, as a member of the Equity Cohort and an employee of the district that works in the Day Treatment Program, the Breathe Day Treatment Program, I'm really feeling the investment that the district is making towards equity and the forward motion with that. I'm frankly very proud of it and was thrilled to see the focus of this budget, advancing equity, and then to really dig into the budget. And it's putting its money, so to speak, where its mouth is. For example, we have spent a great deal of time in the district focusing on the Educators of Color Insights Report and lots of time into staff discussions and learning about how educators of color are experiencing their employment in the district. Some of it was very, very shocking. And I applaud the district for being brave and courageous enough to engage in that. This budget flushes that out some by ensuring that we're strengthening our hiring and support for a diverse workforce by funding a position, as I'm reading here, in our Human Resources Department to operationalize recruitment and affinity groups for educators of color. This is a really important investment. In addition, the continuum for the students with autism and strengthening that right now. After grades five, between grades five and nine, we're not equipped within our district to adequately support those students with autism. So either they have to be placed out of district, and what I read, I believe the cost is upwards of $83,000, or they're inappropriately placed in programs where we do not have the capacity to support them properly, Breathe Program being one of them. So I really encourage everybody on the council to really look at the pieces that we might be taking out if this budget is not supported in full and looking at it certainly. I'm a novice, but there's nothing that I would take out of this budget as it all really supports the theme of advancing equity. Once again, thank you for taking my comments tonight, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Claire. And next, I've got two more hands up, just to let folks know. So if you are here and you would like to speak, it would be great if you could go ahead and raise your hand. We've just got a third. So it looks like we're heading into the tail end of public comment. I do want to, I will thank you at the end, but thank you to everybody who is here tonight to speak on the budget. And next, I go to Al Cleveland.
Hi, thank you all so much for being here. I'll be sure. I'm here to speak in support of the school budget proposed by the school board, the experts of our education system, to get passed without any cuts. Any short-term funding options for equity in the city is a failure to respond to the long-term needs of the community and the needs that the community has been calling for. This city is currently spending $17 million for a general fund on the Portland Police Department, and this small increase into equity is nothing compared to that. I really urge you all to trust the school board, trust all of the experts in the community that have showed up tonight to tell you about where this money will go in the investment and to show young people in our city that the city council and the school board are working hand-in-hand to fund the equity that our school system deserves. And we all are showing all of the students in our community about what potential they have to do things that might be at first a little risky but really end up showing to be long-term investments. Thank you all, and I trust you all to make the right decision.
Before we lose you, I just want to make sure, Al, if your name is Al Cleveland, and I just didn't get an address.
Thank you so much. I'm Al Cleveland from 22 Bailey Ave in Portland. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we go to Sarah Rubin.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rubin, and I live at 28 Harvey Street. And I also own an apartment building at 17 Nois Street. And I mention this because I'm a taxpayer times two, and yet I'm urging the council to vote to send the school budget as sent to you by the school board without any cuts to the voters in June. I believe in every part of this budget. It has such a crystal-clear focus on building capacity for more equitable schools. And the care that Superintendent Botana took in ensuring that every bit of the expenditures in this budget were thoughtful and would directly support our students makes it a no-brainer as a taxpayer in my mind. I'm also speaking to you tonight as a parent of two soon-to-be Portland Public Schools students and as the first-year assistant principal at Lysette Elementary. We need the positions and programs that are contributing to the increase in this year's budget. None are truly new positions or programs, but rather, this is money to support the full implementation of initiatives and programs that already exist. Funding ELL teachers and ed techs, K transportation, social workers to bring our schools in line with recommended ratios for student supports, a commitment to a position to complete the work of our Wabanaki and Afrikanas Studies Program, and so much more is what we're talking about, not anything brand-new. Cutting $1.5 million will just require snipping there. Cutting $1.5 million will mean that we aren't able to fully commit to programs and initiatives that already exist. We are recovering from COVID, and as someone else said tonight, he spoke of maintaining critical programs. This budget is bringing us to the point of maintaining critical programs, not growing them. And if I may be blunt, our critical programs have been hobbling along in a lot of ways. This isn't plowing or sanitation. These aren't issues that can wait a few more hours. Our students need the services and programs that the budget supports at a nominal cost to taxpayers, in my opinion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, too. And next, we'll go to Roberto.
Good evening. You can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you. So my name is Roberto Rodriguez. I live at 17 Sanborn Street. I'm a homeowner. I'm a school board member, currently recovering after serving two years as chair of the board. Tonight, I was not prepared to speak, but I did want to hop on for a second, if at least, to thank the many people that spoke tonight in favor of supporting the budget and even the voice that we heard today calling caution to the increases. In general, I just want to thank people for their advocacy and engagement with our work today. I have the great privilege of speaking on this budget and voting on this budget, so I'll spare you my sentiments, which I believe have been clearly stated through this process. I wanted to just say one quick thing. Someone in the council who I've recently gotten to know, I'm very interested in continuing to know, councillor Dian. And I had an opportunity to speak a couple of weeks ago, and I want to thank him for his time to speak about the budget with me. But the reason I'm bringing this up is, as I was describing to him my experience serving on the school board and what I've learned as I've networked with people that work in our schools, as I've learned about our families, our students, I was very clear to him about how I feel about our schools. And he was very sincere in his response. He said, "Roberto." But if I didn't say it like that, he said, "Roberto, you sound very sincere," he said. And I told him, "Mark, if you saw the work that's going on in our schools, you'd see why it's so easy to sound sincere about this." And tonight, you heard a bit of that, right? You heard administrators, teachers, parents all speak about the amazing, powerful, transformative work that's going on in Portland Public Schools. And I just wanted to highlight that, that what you heard today was the boots on the ground, the people that know our families speaking. There's members of this council, and I'm sorry that I'm using specific names, but I want to commend the work that has been done. There's members of this council, like councillor Chung, councillor Ferner, councillor Ali, and I know that others have as well, but I'm centering those three voices because those are my brothers and my sister. And I want to commend them for the work that they've done, and I want to commend them for the perspective that they've gained. And I know that they understand the value of these investments to advance equity in a very intimate way. So I just want to commend them for the work that they've done and the experiences that they've had that allows them to connect with this work so intimately. And to the rest of the council, I don't mean to leave you aside in that comment. I know that you care about these investments, and you've demonstrated. So earlier today, I was thrilled to hear about the innovative new housing project that you guys approved today to move forward. That's the kind of stuff that gets this city motivated, and that's what builds trust with your constituents. So I hear the bell. So thank you again for your time. And again, I just wanted to applaud the folks that spoke tonight and the council for your work. I'll see you all in a meeting soon to happen. Have a good night.
Thank you. And next, we'll go to Abigail.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allie Elliott. I'm a Portland voter and a resident at 115 Veranda Street. I'm also a special educator in the district. I teach in the Functional Life Skills Program at Deering. I wasn't prepared to hop on here and speak tonight either, but I just wanted to bring to your attention one of the things in this equity budget is a third position, special education position. The state of Maine just kind of caught up to the rest of the country in the free and appropriate public education for students with IEPs. They are now going to be allowed, if needed, to stay in school until age 22. They typically would have aged out in their 20th year. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention if it wasn't already. That means that we are not aging out as many people, and there's going to be a larger number of students in our high school. So that position is, again, needs long-term funding, not like from the CARES initiative. So all that to say, just that there are real needs that are addressed in this budget. Students, families, educators, school staff, we're all going to feel a direct hit if it is passed. So I encourage you to pass the budget as proposed to the voters of Portland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, too. And we are down to our last hand-up for public comment. It is a phone number, and it's 977. So I don't have a name, but if you could give us your name, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, my name is Amos Kazadi. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I've been here, I'm a resident in Maine, five, six years ago. I saw, like, before when I came, until right now, the man, everything changed. Everything come up. That I was, I'm so happy to see when I came in 2014, everything was down, everything was bad for us, like for me. But this time, I saw everything come up. And I was in Africa. But right now, since last year, until right now, I want to, I'm taking the class for CDA to help the kids in the future. But I surprise, just something would be like to cut the budget. I'm saying, oh, just when I'm trying to take in the class to help the kid how they can cut the budget. But for me, I'm taking place, it'd be a good idea to keep the budget go up. It can be like benefits for the city in Poland, and it can be the benefits for all men in the future. That I'm studying for this period when we have any time the zone, the kid has the zone at home. I preached, no, I had a lot of teacher, they called me, "Oh, Amos, can you help Moses in the class?" I'm living in Poland, in 246 Urban Street. My son is goes to school in Elisev. Anytime the teacher work hard to push me, to push me to learning, to help my son, because my son was, he came in 2018, '19. He does it to speak English well. Just during for this period, they just called me a lot. They had the Zoom face-to-face. Now I see my boy is go up. It's good to keep the budget to help the other kids, the newcomer. That's my idea I have.
Thank you so much for your comment. Appreciate being here tonight. And our last hand up is George Rowe.
George Rowe, 28 Hanover Street. I support this education budget that the school board has presented to you. Not that it doesn't require, you know, more inspection. All of your budgets require inspection. But what I find really offensive is that this is what you guys are digging into, while you don't actually scrutinize very often the city side of the spending, and you don't question what, you know, our city officials bring to you, but on the school board side, you're more than happy to not give any deference to that and to basically overwhelm their hard work with an abstract principle. And that abstract principle is you, as politicians, would like to have a nice round number, zero, for tax increases for this fiscal year coming forward. And you want to do that to protect yourself because obviously the revaluation is going to upset certain people. But the people that are going to be upset by that are people who have known for years that their properties have been dramatically undervalued. Somebody, I don't know who, maybe it was the chair of the Finance Committee, councillor Mavadonis, had some public emails from people about the budget included in the Finance Committee materials. And the first name on that, the first email in that list of five emails or so was a property owner on Great Diamond Island. And this individual in the email basically represented herself as a Great Diamond Island resident, a Portland resident. Turns out, her tax bill goes to Ipswich, Massachusetts, one of the most affluent communities in Massachusetts. Her seasonal cottage on Great Diamond Island is not occupiable all year round. And in both cases, the property is worth, in both places, Massachusetts and the island, is worth a ton of money. This is who our Finance Committee apparently is protecting, is an out-of-state resident who doesn't want to have to pay more money for their seasonal cottage. And, you know, our valuation is right now 77% of the state's estimate of our tax valuation. We're leaving a huge amount of money on the table. And I think actually, right now, we're probably closer to 70% than 77%, but I think 77% was last year. So basically, and a lot of you are in that category, you're going to pay more, and you don't like it. But that's equity, because you have, you're sitting on a ton of real estate value, and it needs to be taxed fairly. And we should have a school budget that reflects that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no further hands up, so I want to, thanks, thank, oh, we do have one more. Okay, so if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we're going to have lots of awkward moments like that. So looks like we've got our 30th hand up, John Thibodeau.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry I was debating about whether to testify tonight or next week. So a few things I'd like to share. John Thibodeau, 114 Clinton Street, and speaking on behalf of Equity in Portland Schools. And first of all, I just want to say, you know, I know that all of you share the values that we're talking about here tonight, and that's not a question. The question is, what do we do about it? Right? So that's what we're debating here. So, but I just thought it was important to emphasize that. I understand that. I think most Portland residents do too. And so there's a couple of different parts I want to talk about here briefly, obviously. The first one, you know, we're all aware of this, but we've gotten to know, you know, so much better this year. The centuries of colonialism and systemic American racism that has extraordinarily oppressed and abused Black and Brown people. And I just feel like that cannot be said enough, and that needs to be front and center. So as we keep that front and center, we look at our school district. And we are, unlike any of our neighboring towns or cities in this community or near this part of the state, close to 50% of our students are students of color, many of whom are from different parts of the world, who have overcome extraordinary challenges. Keeping this in mind, again, this is our school district. This is our city. Taking one step back, since 2017, when the Portland Public Schools, they launched the Portland Promise in that year, 2017, and they identified equity as a key priority, a vital priority. Since that time, the school board has brought forth equity aspiring budgets each of those years. Last year was a little different because of the pandemic, but for the most part, every single year. And every single year, those equity aspiring budgets were vetoed by the two-thirds necessary on the city council to reject it and send it back. So that's our recent history. And, you know, the pandemic has happened. The awareness of violence against Blacks and systemic racism has become so much more clear this year to myself, to all of us, I'm sure. We're in a very different place this year than we were the last three and four years. The world is in a different place. And I think we need to remember that as well. This is not the years past. The last point I want to hit on is the financial piece, which is really changing gears, but I know this is something that you're all discussing and wrestling with. So last week, the US reported a 6.4% GDP growth for the first quarter. It was the highest growth since 2003. So this is not last year. We're not looking at going over a cliff. We're looking at an economy that is growing and is expected to continue to grow robustly. It's a very different time, 0% budget. Can I ask for 30 more seconds?
Sure.
So this is a very different time. Last year, we had a 0% budget. I testified in support of a 0% budget. And for me to do that, you know, it must have been a bad time. So, but this is not last year. This is 2021. We're in a different place. And we're so close. And we're talking about an equity-moving budget that could really move the city in a different direction, in a fundamentally good direction. And we're talking still about a low tax rate increase, 1% to 2%, somewhere in there. We're not talking some crazy number here. This is a low number. So I just encourage you to support the school board budget. We're so close. It's an opportunity for us to do this. Please do it.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, I am going to close public comment on tonight's public hearing. Thank you very much for everybody who attended to listen, to participate. As I mentioned earlier, we will have another public hearing for folks who have not had the chance to weigh in at this point, next meeting, May 10th, which is the night that the city council is scheduled to take action on the school district's budget. We did have 30 folks speak tonight. So thank you for all those people who spent some of their evening with us. Appreciate you being here and appreciate your input. Like I said, next week will be the council's opportunity to have a discussion, ask questions, you know, consider and deliberate, and it will also be another opportunity for public hearing. So we'll look forward to hearing from more folks then. And with that, this agenda this evening is finished. So I'm going to look to the council for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Councillor Mavadonis with a second from councillor Zaro. And I think we're ready to vote on that.
Councillor Fornia.
Yes.
Councillor Mavadonis.
Yes.
Councillor Dian.
Yes.
Councillor Ali.
Yes.
Zaro.
Yes.
Councillor Ray.
Yes.
Councillor Thibodeau.
Yes.
Councillor Chang.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, again, for being here tonight and for the good, hard work on this agenda, and I will see you very soon.